Council to to actual run it, but I'm these are fairly informal, kind of more of a work session format. Um is how they're structured. We're not really making any decisions here today. We've got two agenda items and a big welcome to our guests. For the first item to talk about a youth advisory committee, then we'll also have. Uh our chief and Adam Goggins here to talk about the mobile crisis response team. And I think there's maybe even a change in name. So we'll talk more about that at the second item. But before we get to that business, there's just the minutes from the last meeting. So if anybody would make a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve the September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes.
Second, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Um I'm gonna turn it over to Counselor Campbell to introduce the uh folks uh in front of us here. To present on the Youth Advisory Council.
Excellent. I am so excited that we are here today. Um for myself. This is an idea I have been interested in since I first came on to city council. We have been doing such excellent work, trying to include all members of our community. In making policy and young folks are some of the hardest to reach out to. And um and at the very most fundamental le- level, young people, they can't, you can't even vote. You know, non-people who are not even old enough to vote and have that kind of influence on their government. And for me, it's young people who are going to be living with. The consequences of the decisions that we are making today. And so for all of those reasons, I have honestly felt like trying to include a youth voice. For our decisions has been something I've been interested in for a long time. And so I was really thrilled when two high school students approached me. And those students are with us today. It's Maddie Burge and Pippa Sousa were those two. And in my humble opinion, there's an easy way to tell if an idea is a good idea. If you say the idea out loud and people start approaching you wanting to participate, that means it's probably a good idea. And that's why we have with us today Maxim Ranzulia Day. Who is with Campfire and also Zafira. Zafira, remind me your last name. I'm Z-
Larson.
Thank you so much. Zafira Larson is a campfire leader. She is with Campfire Central Oregon. And she reached out to me saying perhaps Campfire could help with these efforts. I myself have been involved with Campfire. I was a co-leader for a while. And I know what excellent work they do with young people and that Campfire. Already reaches out to young people. And so I also thought that could be an excellent. Resource for us to try and in the first place, set up a youth advisory council. And then going forward, actually managing running such a thing. So I just teased what we're talking about. It's a youth advisory council. Um apparently, this thing is called a Yak. There are twenty-three other cities in Oregon alone that already have youth advisory councils. And this is a nationwide thing. Kids get to go to a conference in Washington DC. As part with youth advisory councils and talk to other young people around the country about issues that involve them. Um I think that in addition to this opportunity for we, the council, to learn. I think it's also an opportunity for young people to learn and to get more people actually involved in in government. And to see firsthand how their own government works. So that was quite the lead up because I'm just so excited about this. And unless anybody has any questions about that, I will just let you take it away.
Thank you.
Of course.
With that, could we get the slideshow pulled up? Perfect. And to start off with, I'll introduce myself again.
Excuse me. Yeah, can you tell one of them so we can see? It's hard for us to see. Maybe the one behind you guys.
Oh, sure.
Thanks. Yeah.
There we are. Thank you.
Okay, on that note, my name is Maddie Burge. I am a senior at Ben Senior High School. And I am one of the co-founders of this project.
And my name is Pippa Souza. I am a student at Summit High School and I'm also a co-founder of the Advisory Council Project.
Uh hello, my name is Maxim. Uh I am a representative of Campfire Central Oregon and I also go to Ben's Senior High School.
And I'm Zafira Larson. I'm a program manager at Campfire Central Oregon.
Next slide, please. First, we want to go over what a Yak is. A Youth Advisory Council, or Yak for short, is a body comprised of students and youth. That work with the city council in the same manner that other advisory councils would. The only difference is that Yaks are comprised of youth. Next slide, please.
So during our research, we found that approximately twenty percent of Ben's population is under the age of eighteen. Yet there is no organized way for the young people in our city to give their input into city government. Ben City Council also does not have a system to receive feedback from young people in the community that is direct and accessible.
Other similar sized cities such as Hillsborough have created youth advisory councils, also known as a Yak yet again, to meet this need. Even smaller cities such as Tegard, Sweet Home, Westland, and Wilsonville have had Yaks in place for years. In fact, in Oregon, as Barb said, there are twenty-three cities that have a Yak. Seeing as Bend is the largest city on this side of the mountains, it makes sense for us to take this next step as well. Next slide, please. Um as for the purpose of our project, through the creation, through the creation of a youth advisory council. We hope to see an increase in youth engagement with the local government. For many students, circumstances such as family duties, extracurriculars, and work. Make it hard for them to find time to learn about policy and government. Through the creation of a Yak, we hope to remedy this.
Additionally, through interactions with the local government, a youth advisory council will create students who are more knowledgeable on political matters. For many students, their knowledge of government primarily comes from their family and what they have shown them. By having a safe space for students to learn about government, students will become more educated on the political and social landscape of our city.
Next slide, please.
Oh, for this project, an outcome we hope to see in Ben's youth community is the increase in accessibility to politics for students. By giving students a space where they can voice their opinions and learn how they impact local government, the gap between student and policy will decrease.
This project also hopes to help create a more educated and unified student body as well. Students will learn about the workings of local government, which will help them be better educated on how policy works at larger scales. Such as statewide, national, and even global. With this knowledge, students can use their voices more effectively to discuss the issues that affect them. Next slide, please. Now, the question you may be asking yourselves is, how can all of this be achieved? The answer is to implement the Youth Advisory Council. The council would be involved in policy and/or the decision-making processes on issues the city council is looking at. This can take many forms.
One example is to have the Yak work directly with the city council to provide youth input in policies and decisions that impact youth. The main idea is to have young people serve as an advisory board to Ben City Council and a liaison between young people and our city's government.
Next slide, please. The most important role for the Yak to fulfill is that of a body which can share, which can share and promote youth voices. As such, in order for the Yak to do this, it must be a body that can both be directed by the council. To look at issues that the city council wants youth input on, as well as also being able to bring up issues of their choice to the city council to look at. This point is important as youth can offer unique perspectives that the council may not otherwise consider. Next slide, please.
The most important thing for the Youth Advisory Council is that it is operated and led by the youth. The council, like any other, must have consistent and structured meetings. The goal is to create a safe space for youth that ensures feedback to city councils being given responsibly and safely. The Yak should also ensure that meeting times are being used to plan, implement, and reflect on meaningful projects and proposals.
Next slide, please.
In order to facilitate this Yak, we have asked for the support of Campfire Central Oregon. Campfire Central Oregon is a nonprofit organization in Bend with the mission of connecting youth to the outdoors, to each other, and to themselves. With a variety of programs offered to youth in kindergarten through twelfth grade. Campfire enables youth to thrive through progression of programmatic experiences. Specifically, Campfire teens focus on service and leadership by investing in their community. In order to build understanding and appreciation for making a difference in their backyard. Supporting us as we invest our time and energy into this Yak falls in line perfectly with what Campfire hopes to achieve in our community. They've pledged financial support and have offered the outreach and educational experience of their staff. With their guidance, we have to fulfill our short-term goal in establishing this Yak for the teenagers of Bend.
Next slide, please. Now we are proposing our various options for how this Yak could work. Option number one is that after we looked at the ways that other Yaks are operated, as well as the resources, resources of our team and our city of Bend. We have these three proposals. Number one is that the city of Bend would facilitate infrastructure, funding, and the staffing of youth.
The second proposal will be to have Campfire Central Oregon facilitate this infrastructure funding as well as student outreach and staffing.
The third proposal is that the city of Bend and Campfire Central Oregon would work together to facilitate infrastructure, funding, and student outreach and staffing. This could take various forms, such as the two working together from the start, or having the program start with Campfire and transition to the city of Bend.
Next slide, please. Now that we have presented our reasons for having a Yak, these are the next steps that must be taken. One, in order to launch the Yak, we must understand who is overseeing the Yak, as well as we need to know. Which of the three proposals would be used to help with the Yak's launch? Two, based on the city, Yaks can take many forms. Now, understanding our core components of a Yak, how would one in Bend look in order to fulfill our goals? And finally, three, we must present to the council about the Youth Advisory Council. So that the approval process and implementation may begin. Next slide, please. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them now.
So many. Um, thank you. Yeah, I was written like twenty-five questions. Um, so who would decide in in your? If you had your, if this was gonna exactly the way you wanted it to go. How, who would decide who was on the Yak? Like, well, how were youth chosen for the Yak? Um and? How would you ensure that it was a real equitable representation of kids all around the city? Um and who would decide what issues? Um, the Yak would take on. Are you, are you looking to council to do that? Are you wanting to do that? You want to do both ways? Or you want the community to come to you? You could just kind of go into that.
Yes. So depending on the structure that would be chosen, preferably, this is something that is run by city of Bend. There would be an individual from city of Bend who acts as a manager for the Yak. There is an application process. Um wherein students who are interested in applying for the Yak to be a part of the council. Was sent in an application, giving information of their name, grade, which school they go to, as well as filling out a few essays. Um rather than talk about prior experience.
Yeah.
From those essays and um the student responses, students are chosen from there. To make it more representative, we would hope to have a um certain quota of students. So you can't have um five students from Summit and then one or two from all the other schools. There would be a cap of sorts to help make sure that it's more equitable and would obviously be open to students who are homeschooled. And in the future, or as soon as it implemented, hopefully, students who are at schools such as Realms or other non-traditional schools. Is that all the questions?
The issues. So how like, how would you, how would you like to see the flow in terms of what you would take on on this Yak?
We covered it somewhat, and I believe the role slide.
Yeah.
But there would be a two-way relationship where council could have issues that they want youth input on. So they could reach out to the Yak to investigate those. And the Yak can look at their community, the issues that are important to them, and present those to council as well. That way you get the youth opinion on both sides.
So I'm sure you know from um your research, but the committees and commissions that we have. Um through our city right now, there's a, there's a very sort of, I mean, sure we can get legal involved here, but there's the, the way they run are, are. It's it's set up, right? It's it's an established process that that we can't really deviate from. So I guess the question would be to.
Yeah, so all of our committees, boards, committees, commissions are in our city code. Um and there's quite a lengthy process to form them. So typically it is a uh has been a year plus. To do the research and figure out what is the role. I look at our most recent community, commu- commission. Uh the Human Rights and Equity Commission took about a year plus. And that started from some recommendations, uh community-based recommendations that then went back and forth with council to really um. Articulate the scope and that is in our code. And code, anytime that we put something in our code. It's called an ordinance and that ordinance takes two readings and thirty-day implementation. So it's a process, right? Um and a lot of our boards, committees, and commissions have that same sort of structure where it's a two-way. But I think I would like to get a little more direction from council on what topics you would like to see. Um a youth advisory council take on, because I think we would want, before we would put up the infrastructure, we we've had. Not so good history of setting up boards, committees, commissions, and not resourcing them properly. And then it's frustrating for everybody involved, for youth. Or uh you know, uh volunteers, people that are volunteering their time if they're not really. If we haven't really thought through what the scope is um and to be a little more deliberate. So I'd love to have some more conversation with with council on that. The other thing that I would mention, and I've said to, when we we discussed this, it's not in our current goals or work plan, and this takes resources. So I don't have the capacity right now to staff something like this without moving some things around. And that we can do that. I would just need to have a c- a conversation with council to say, where do you, where does this fit in priority to other things that we've got programmed? In our work plan. Or do you want to really look at maybe a partnership model as being proposed? And having this be something that uh we spend a little more time doing the research for the next council goal setting, so it can be. Um, you know, more, you know, sort of scoped out in more detail uh for that.
Could I tack on to that question? Um and so I have tried to explain, I'm sure, very badly. About our advisory committees and that they are legal decision-making body because they advise us. Is there any problem with folks under eighteen serving in that kind of a capacity?
No, I don't think so. I I am looking at like the Eugene model is a mayor's Yak. Which is not something we've done. We have city manager committees and council committees. We don't have a structure of something in our code that would be a mayor's. What? The hybrid raises questions in my mind. So all of our committees, because they're advisory to council. Are called governing bodies, which means they're subject to the Open Meetings Act, which means they have to be noticed and open to the public. Um under Oregon law. If you were formed under Campfire, that would be a different model, which maybe would not be subject to open meetings law. Hybrid is almost in some ways becomes more complicated, because that's a legal research project that I have. We have to figure out what is it. So in some ways, I I kind of like one or the other, like either a city committee. Or there are like friends of the library. There are certain kind of committees that advise cities. That are under nonprofits that then don't become a city committee. So that would be a potential. But I would say that would be one, like if you wanted to move faster, would maybe be a something for you to explore and bring to the city as. But as, as Eric, the city manager, said, when we form a a committee, we really, it becomes. If it's permanent, and this I think you'd want to be permanent, not um ad hoc, which are temporary committees. It becomes part of our code and we really don't like to form it unless it is going to go on for years. We we want it to be something that lasts. Um and so we have to staff it and council gives it a purpose. And it just takes some time to do that.
Do we know anything about what um how other communities structured? I mean, I'm looking at, yeah.
Oh, I didn't come.
The extent to which they're, they are full-blown advisory or they're somehow a little bit different. Sounds like we, you guys did.
Some people do it for their entire high school. It looks like they're appointed by the mayor and they have directors. And it's a real committee, their advisory. I mean, we can do it if council's interested. That would then be our role at the legal department to go look at how are other cities formed and how do they work? And I'm sure you guys have looked at that.
I don't, Ben Lapine has a superintendent's advisory, youth advisory. Yeah, I'm pretty sure. The mayor and I just met with the superintendent and the board chair, because they just established a youth advisory. So maybe there's some synergy that we could look at with the youth advisory group. And I think there was some openness to do that. That would be another thing that we'd want to explore a little bit to make sure we're not creating. You know, we we have some synergy with with youth getting involved, because it's very hard. Because also, I'm speaking with somebody who has a sixteen and eighteen-year-old, they're really busy, right? And applying for. S- schools and activities and things. So adding more, it it can be a challenge, right? To make, to have that consistency. And I just, we want to think through all of that and making sure that we're using students' time efficiently as well.
I will say, one of the parts of the research we have done is that we have looked at all of the Yaks in Oregon. And we have actually created a spreadsheet, compile, compiling information such as how they are operated and their organization. So if you would want, I can share that with perhaps Mickey, who can send it to the rest of you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If that would help.
Yeah.
So this is.
And Max, I'm sorry, but Max is.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Part of something that we had brought up before, we have done dry runs and we've sort of discussed this, is that we, one possible. Um outcome is that we start off with more of a pilot program, where we start off with full funding from Campfire. And they really supply with like a sort of starting. Point for us to really get like a understanding of how we would do this, that they would sort of build up the initial. Structure of either the hiring process, yeah. And sort of building of that. And then we could come back at a later point when we have have a more core understanding of how we would do it and implement it here in Bend. And we could bring that to you guys. And that way, at the point when you are re-evaluating your core.
The goal, goals. Yeah.
Yeah. And once we have a better grasp on how exactly we would implement it. When you guys are already looking for.
Yeah. Yeah, that's definitely, that's definitely an option. Going to propose is sort of a two-step process where there's sort of a like pilot, like you're saying, Maxim, or. You know, where we do some roundtables or something where we can start to engage and listen and hear. And maybe you all choose a topic and we choose a topic and and get some feedback and input. And then can also be researching what model might work best for the community, because I can imagine maybe other local governments might. You know, I could maybe Ben Park and Rec um would be interested in somehow partnering. I don't know, but.
This would also help uh relieve the stress of either requiring for you guys to supply the resources. Or.
Yeah.
The time to um grasp what would be needed, so we could then have the initial resources. That way we can come to you and say, we now know what amount of resources we would require. To give you a better grasp on what would be needed to be moved around to implement this into the city of Bend as a staple part of the committees.
Yeah. What I think is that, that to me is the, the, I think this is a fabulous idea. And I think that they have like the flow of information and how that would work, especially if it is through Campfire, you know, that's non-traditional. And so I think that would be, you know, something to kind of keep having conversations about. And then not to throw a wrench in it, because I do think that's the best solution, but um, I mean. The Human Rights and Equity Commission is 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 there to to um to to talk about priority populations that are not usually represented in the decision-making process. So another thought would be that maybe it's a standing subcommittee of the Human Rights and Equity Commission in the future. Um if that's something that we can even do, or or I don't know, just somehow connect it to the Human Rights and Equity Commission. It seems to me like that might.
Yeah.
Need something to look at.
Yeah.
That was my first thought was equity, right? That's how I.
Yeah.
Came, you know, at this moment was why this came back to me, you know, again, this has been a number of years where. We gotta do that. And most recently, it was equity. Um someone else, again. People reaching out to me, hey, I hear you're interested. Um someone else um suggested sustainability. That this might be something that falls under sustainability. Um but either way, not that we have a great big sustainability department with lots of time or staff. Um, so the slide showed kind of three ideas, right? And the first was essentially city-led. The city is gonna do this and figure this out. The third was campfire-led and then kind of hybrid. It sounds like we're all more interested in some sort of a hybrid model. Um, well, I mean, I'll I'll go ahead and finish my sentence. A partnership, thank you. Yes. Where my only concern is. I don't want you all to spend all of the time setting up a pilot. That is just not what city council or city staff believe would work in the end. And so that's what I meant by hybrid and you're right, partnership is better. You know, I wouldn't suggest we're just gonna have you all in Campfire go out there. Create something that you think would would be a good Yak and then come to council and see. I think you want to try and keep us involved along the way. Um, I'm imagining, like Mike said, we might be able to help coordinate some meetings. To if you, but again, that's what Campfire has volunteered to do for us.
If I could offer a suggestion that maybe um to put us on a path forward would be, and I'd want to hear from Campfire. To see if this is possible, um is to do what what um you just suggested. Um, um maximum of like having, putting some shape to this idea. I think there's some interest, putting some shape to it. And then maybe the next step being a roundtable with the full council, where we can get into a little more detail, a little more scoping. But having kind of Campfire be that bridge to help us prepare for that meeting. Um, you tell me, maybe in three months or so, uh maybe this winter, later winter or spring timeframe of to bring the council back. If that works.
Camper, we, we have the space. We have the physical resources. We have um the possibility of the financial resources. Because we're a nonprofit, we apply for grants. I've already applied for grant for this. I don't know what they told me about it.
Amazing.
We have the capacity to support this, to um help the the kids get more voices. Um, we already have a whole network for outreach. Um, once we have the youth who are interested, um we can uh see how we want it to be led. See the sort of goals and that they want to achieve and then come to you.
Right.
I think the most important thing is to understand what council would expect of the Yak in terms of how they advise. Um the sort of uh steps to that process. And then we go from there. And I think not rushing it is really important. I know that um when Maddie and Pippa came to me. Their, their goal is to establish it, because they're both almost on the high school, maximum only has a year left. So how do we establish this so that it is a a long-term, sustainable project? So I think that's what, if we don't rush it, if we take the time to work with all of you.
Right.
Um, we use our resources wisely, then we can bring this to you and and work together.
Yeah.
That it is sustainable. Then they can come back when they're in college and advise us a little bit more.
Yes, and also, um again, we have compiled some information, but we also have um the contact information. For people who are in charge of the other Yaks.
Great.
They've given us resources such as um presentations that Yak members have presented to their city councils. Um, application forms. So I can share, we could share all of the information we have of their contacts. As well as the um sources that they have given us, if that would help at all.
I think that would be great uh um for that roundtable, maybe just a little bit more of some best practices of other cities. And then maybe, and Mickey, and I'm gonna ask Mickey to help be a, continue to be a a resource point for you. Even taking an uh uh an issue and just kind of like working it through, like here's an example of what that might look like.
Yeah.
So if we have the input of a youth advisory council on this specific issue, maybe take an issue from the current council goals and work plan. And almost sort of like workshop it as a sort of a case study. And share that in a really, in a summary form with the council at our, at our future roundtable that we could plan. That would be, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Part of Yak is that we are able to implement, uh because we're so few as people are in the actual council themselves. That part of it is that we're able to bring outreach to our high schools, which has just a large congregation of similarly-minded people. Every like five days a week, we have hours of children in school that aren't really being represented. And so having kids that are, are at those schools and we're now giving a voice to this large group of kids. And then we're able to have kids that are there to be able to communicate their ideas. We can have surveys that we can bring up to share to teachers. We can sort of bring the collective voice and then we can be the spokesperson this. Speaker.
Yeah.
Yeah, the spokesperson for this large body.
Yes, and we've thought of various ways this could be done. As government classes are now mandatory for all students. Um the service on a Yak or time assisting the Yak or presenting ideas to them could serve as extra credit. Um within our school, we have many student-run clubs and organizations that do volunteer service or. Or um, or even activist groups such as our environmental club at Bend High.
Right.
And Yak leaders who are a member of the council could run a club of that sort. So that students who are interested can voice their opinion and have their voices heard, even if they do have issues. Such as work, extracurriculars, or just family responsibilities.
We already have at from, I only know really much about Bend High, at Bend High, we have. It's, it varies, but uh, around like every other, every third Thursday, we have an advisory day. We set aside time for us to go over either issues that are happening in our school, whether they're happening outside of our school, whenever we have a sparrow. We'll have have an advisory day, we'll we'll come together and we'll talk about that. So we already have a period where we've set aside for either taking a survey to understand what the students themselves want just out of our school. So if we share Yak to at least our schools um. Head, I feel like that could, we already have a time set aside. So using that time to then supply a survey of like, what are students' opinions on a certain issue that you all are looking at? To bring in that sort of voice, we already have a period at least of Bend High.
Yeah.
For them.
And um, activity directors um, at the high, the public high schools, at least that we have reached out to, are all approving. Of this Yak and having it implemented in some way, being student led.
And I have also, um, I contacted the superintendent about two months ago, I would say. Um, asking how we might be able to directly have outreach within the schools. So.
And I think that would be, I know the mayor, I'm speaking for her, would be really interested in in that presentation in the roundtable. Just basically capturing what you all just said of how you can create efficiency synergy with. All of these networks and things that are in the schools already that we can just use. Um, and not create a new process, but we can rely on kind of that network to help build and create a more of an efficient way to deliver information. Including the the newly formed advisory council that the school district put in place.
Yeah.
I think they were really open to that idea, so I think if if we could explore that further, right?
Yeah, from what I've seen is that we have a lot of connections to understanding this. Like students' thoughts and opinions, I feel like we just haven't made the final connection to government or our council.
Yeah.
I think that's so valuable because if you form that connection, you know, as in in your teams, then you stay here and you stay involved in Bend and and so I think that's great.
Yeah, it's important to become an educated, just a member of society.
Know your city. Yeah, I love it. I love it.
When I was in high school, I participated in something called Youth and Government that was run through the YMCA. And I went to the state capital and we elected a mayor, a governor and I was a lobbyist back then. But I was kind of, I joined late, so that was all that was left, but um. It was actually a really informative um, experience and just learning about how things work. So I I really support something like this. I think it's a question of just have to kind of work through the process and make sure. You know, there's the resource question of time and work plans that have already been set up and so how do we kind of get this into that? Going forward, I really appreciate the initiative you guys took to make this happen.
So if I may, so they're based on the three options they provided, so the first one is put it in this council goal and budget, that's not um. Um, uh, possible right now. The second is to go with Campfire, Campfire will support it, sponsor it, establish it with them. And then the next council goal, starting next November twenty twenty four, they could start to circle back and say, hey, we have this pilot. It's been successful. Do we wish to continue with Campfire and this structure? Or do we want Ben, you know, to transfer to Bend or perhaps get funding from Bend to sponsor it? That sort of thing. So based on what you support today, that's how they're going to move forward with some sort of framework. So it's one.
And with the roundtable, I think is a is a.
As a check in, yeah, we don't, I don't, I don't think we know the answer to that question until we kind of get a little more uh, detail. And so as as long as, as long as Campfire is willing to take that on and to help facilitate and I'll just offer up my um. Assistance too, I do like a Bend one O one, I do that for new employees, I do it for community groups, I'm happy to. If you have a meeting and just want to get a little better better sense of what city government does, what our core functions are.
They can watch.
Um, I do a video, yeah.
Taxpaying video.
The video, we can, we can go, we can go as deep as you want to go or as deep at high level, like a twenty minute thing. So just what I want to make sure is that we're, if we're being thoughtful about this, that there's good understanding from students too about what are core services. I think sometimes there's a surprise too, when students are like, well, you don't get involved in public health issues or no, we don't do library or parks. It's a pretty, in some ways, a fairly narrow set of core services and making sure that that's known on the front end. You know, so that students will know exactly where their influence would lie with the city would be, I think, really impactful, so.
And you'll send the research you did.
Yes, um, I can send that to Mickey.
To Mickey, yeah, our office actually called for the Human Rights and Equity Commission, we called other cities and. Just asking questions about, they'll talk to us about, well, how does it actually work? Like there's one thing on paper, it's another, talking to their staff to say, like, is it up and running, is it me? So we we can do some of that.
Yes, I've also created write ups for the people that we did interview. Um, to kind of summarize the information that we got from them, which also included um, any tips that they would have. And things that they would recommend for new councils, so I can also share that with Mickey. I think Barb has it right now.
That's great.
Oh, that's great. Um, the the last, for me, um, Maddie, you already mentioned um, kids who are homeschooled. Kids who are not in the four biggest high schools, you know, that's going to be one of the details I'll be looking for. Is okay, now how are we going to employ them and you know, and again, that equity. Um, among the school, you don't have five from one school and only, you know, what do you do? If all the applications you got were from Summit, how are you gonna get more applica-? You know, all of those kinds of things are why it takes a year and a half to set up a committee. And hopefully, you have already done, you clear, not hopefully, you have already done so much research and investigation on this. And again, our twenty-three other cities in the state that are already doing this. So I do, I think you're going to be able to get some kind of a pilot. That Maddie and Pippa are going to be able to celebrate next fall before they head off to college and I just, yes, Maddie.
I would like to add, that is why we are trying to work with the schools to try and get something within it. Because then that does ensure a higher likelihood that more students, a wider array of students would even go for this program.
That's right.
Naturally thinking about how programs such as this would work. It makes most sense if for maybe the first few years, it is mainly public high school students, just as that is easiest to implement.
Of course.
But as it's more structured, if it has more of a founding, it's able to expand because it already has that strong base.
It's great.
So.
Well, just also that, you know, you, the recruitment is not just about which school you go to, but that's thought, you know, it's really thoughtful. Um, that it represents, you know, what what human beings on our planet actually look like. Um, and um, that they come from a variety of of different neighborhoods and communities and, you know, um, there are six hundred kids. Um, in Deschutes County um, schools that are homeless. And it would be, you know, um, I just, just keeping that kind of in mind when you're going through it too, um, would love to hear more about that.
Yeah, and that's definitely something that um, Campfire, we can help to facilitate that outreach.
Great.
To make sure that it is equitable and that it is a a good um. Not summary, but a good selection of youth that really do represent as many people as possible.
Yeah.
Um, to kind of summarize what I've been hearing, uh, for us, the next steps really are to uh, meet. Try and get some recruitment going and to come up with that system and that that process of how we would uh, work. Like Counselor Campbell was saying, and then present that to you and all of our findings in the next three months or so.
Yeah, you, I mean, I think we're flexible, we want to make sure you have enough time to actually get the work done, so. Um, just stay in contact with Mickey, I'll have Mickey continue to be a point of contact for you.
Yeah, that's great.
And I remember looking at um, schedules, with the next meeting we would have um, be with the stewardship committee again, or would it be?
Full council.
Full council.
Round table with the full council.
Perfect. And then in that case, I believe last I checked, there are meetings in December and January. Are there meetings in February as well?
Council meeting.
Council meeting.
Oh, yeah, yes. Um, we would be, what we're talking about would be a roundtable that would be separate from our regularly scheduled. Council meetings, maybe on that same day, but that roundtable format. Is a better opportunity to actually discuss, to have back and forth, more questions, ideas. Um, and and frankly, I want to thank, I, it might have been you, Megan, that, you know, the idea to come to this committee. Because our council works schedule absolutely was packed. And when I brought the idea up at work session, it was, wow, how are we going to manage this? So just shout out, I don't know who it was that thought of stewardship, it wasn't me. And and I just genuinely, I'm just so glad we were here today. Um, that it's a similar format to this.
Yeah.
Where we can discuss, we can ask questions, you can ask questions of us. And so I think that's what we're talking about for the next step. And then um, Max, what you described, um, where, you know, folks might take a survey at their school. Um, that's exactly how we have representation on many of our committees. You know, we select someone from a particular group with the idea that they're going to be able to bring feedback. From the group, they're not just going to be an individual sitting on an advisory committee. You know, that already is very much how we seat some of our committees. So yes, Max, that's, you know, that's exactly what I would just be so delighted to learn is the whole school took this survey. About whether we should do bike lanes on Franklin before we do, you know, some other place. And yes, this is, you know, just super excited.
I feel like a lot of what we need is with Campfire, Campfire has a lot of already connections to the youth community.
That's right.
So they can have, bring in that sort of um, like equality of all groups, making sure that we all. Um, groups are represented in Bend, so that we have an equal understanding as well as they have, um, it's a leadership program. A uh, building upon leadership, so already having students that are trying to make an impact on their community.
That's right.
And bring those students into a program like Yak, which is then bring that leadership. And now implementing it into a way to actually impact our city's decisions and.
That's right.
Like, I forgot what the.
Also had um, a group set called Fridays for Future. Um, and what was it, the F F F C Y, I believe was the abbreviation. Pardon me if I forgot, who um, were also interested in this program and are supporters of it. Um, and that is comprised of youth, so there is.
Fantastic.
There are people who want to see this, so I don't think staffing.
I think we're all so excited, we could sit here all afternoon and talk about Youth Advisory Council.
We all would have been on the Yak.
Yes. How much we support this idea, but we do have another agenda item, so maybe we should round this one up.
If, thank you so much. And um, I, we have had, just to um, build off of a little experience that we've had. So it was mentioned that we have an environment and climate committee and we have a Human Rights and Equity Commission, both of those uh. Groups that are part of council, the council's governance structure did include a seat for youth. Um, and so we have had some experience, although I would say in both circumstances, we had. Youth there and it just, it never was one voice and it was hard because they were applying to colleges. So I would love to get some, you know, because I think that you could create a standalone youth advisory council, but there's also another model of really um, embedding youth.
Yeah.
In like affordable housing, planning, I mean, all the other things too, there's different ways to slice advice, so you might want to think about.
Absolutely.
Um, because some, some youth might be more focused on a specific topic or, you know, around climate change or around affordable housing. And they're, they would be allowed to go a little deeper in those areas if you're on a committee versus. Just a standalone youth advisory. I mean, I could see pros and cons to it, but I think it'd be worth. Looking at it and we have had a little experience and we can tell you kind of what we learned as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of what I've looked at of um, youth councils just around the country, that uh, one successful, I've. Where, I didn't, Connecticut, I don't, I don't remember the exact state, but part of what they had implemented was it was a council, I believe of fifteen up to twenty. So it goes past of just teens, it goes up to twenties.
Up to twenty, I think.
It gives that range of sort of middle, high school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Applied, you may have even started to go into college, so you have that range of students who are both applying to college, who are preparing to apply. Who are just starting sort of understanding what the process is, um, are in college, so you get that sort of range of ideas and um. Processes and developmental stages is vastly different, even between those four years. You have very different stances on topics purely off of like experience of over four years, you just. You just, the view that people have of you changes, so your conversations with others will change. Bring in that view of like, twenty is so different from sixteen.
Yeah. And um, and a similar note for things such as attendance for people who are busy. A lot of the YACs that we've looked at have a form that student um, and the parents have to sign and you can only miss a certain amount of meetings. Before you are removed from the council, so there is that strict structure in place, that way you ensure. That you aren't choosing people who can't fill those time slots.
That's great.
So.
Staff, any other questions?
No, I think uh, we've got some.
Pictures, right? Mickey, will you take a picture?
Yes. Now. Where are you going?
Yeah, I think we'll probably just. All right, one, two, three, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Forward to seeing.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys. Great job. To see you. Whoa.
Doesn't have a little thing, just where I can check it out.
And.
Oh.
And I, maybe I'll just tee up the the chief uh, before we begin on this item. So this was, if you remember, when we had the American Rescue Plan Act funds, so this this committee. Um, I think Megan, you were the only one that 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 has still remained, but we had a, we put a whole plan together. And a portion of those funds were um, deployed in partnership with Deschutes County to really help bolster our stabilization center. And then it's sort of as an outgrowth of that, our mobile crisis response team to uh. Really align to council goals of creating more of a direct response for for those folks that are in a mental health crisis. Instead of having law enforcement be the first point of contact, there are certain calls that. Better to have a behavior, somebody that's trained uh, at a much deeper level, we have our officers trained as well, but but um. Uh, what we want to do is just provide you with an update as to how it's going, it's been almost, well, six months, May, May. Yeah, nine months, eight months, something. My math is bad, so I'm going to turn it over to the chief and he can introduce Adam and uh, help get this kicked off.
Thank you, I know that one went a little late, how how much time do we have?
Uh, we're, we're actually good until one o'clock, so.
We have all the time.
We have about.
Way more than. Uh, Mike Krantz, Chief of Police, uh, City Bend. Um, Adam will be really the star today and I'll let him introduce himself when when it passes over to him. Uh, I just wanted to give you a brief update and introduction, a little bit around reminding of our council goals for twenty-one, twenty-three, safety, health, accountability and justice. Um, one of the goals was invest in community based public safety response systems for crisis that don't require traditional law enforcement approach. With an action being specifically partner with Deschutes County and public stakeholders to fund a mobile crisis intervention team, which really is what um. The city manager just talked about and led into our partnership. And then our um, our twenty-three to twenty-five public safety council goal is reduce service demands through partnerships, use of technology, alternative response and community education. Uh, with a specific action of identify and implement partnerships for alternative responses to ensure the right response for the right situation. And that's really what we're talking about today is um, particularly when we talk about. And I'll say the impact of law enforcement and we've had some of these discussions previously with previous councils. That in the past ten to fifteen years, there was a large shift. In responsibility of who takes calls for service on the street, where things involve things more like substance substance abuse disorder. Or mental health crisis that don't really need law enforcement because there's no crime being committed specifically or it it really is not best. Or it, it really is not best served by law enforcement coming and taking a enforcement action, uh, if one was available. And that really became the trend, um, and, and we were included in that as a city event. So we saw our responses uh, expand rapidly, particularly in uh, twenty nineteen, we'll say we had nineteen hundred calls for service that involved some sort of mental health crisis or, or suicidal threat. Um, stayed about eighteen hundred, uh, and almost nineteen hundred and twenty twenty. And then it really, uh, twenty twenty-one really had an impact where we did twenty-three hundred cert calls for service. And then twenty twenty-two, we did on nineteen, nineteen hundred, so we're really hovering around that two thousand plus calls for service. Um, specific to those call types, and that impact to us is roughly forty-five minutes per call. But usually a little longer for things involving mental health crisis, sometimes an hour to two hours because of the need for us to bring a lot more resources. So it has an impact, um, a financial impact for us, uh, as a police department, has impact to our personnel. And then there's a bigger impact of are we really serving the person, the community with the right resource? Um, we do a really phenomenal job, our officers are well-trained in crisis response, we train in communication, de-escalation. Our goal is never to use force, particularly in uh, when we have a crisis response issue where there's not a crime. Um, unless we absolutely have to to protect one, one person themselves or others or us. Um, but sometimes those also led to unnecessary consequences, unnecessary interactions. And so the best thing is to find who is the best resource to respond. And you really supported that through the twenty-one, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-five council goals of finding the other resource, right? And so that's why I'm gonna let Adam come into this, because he's really got a lot of information to share, I'll let him introduce himself. But um, I can't say enough about the partnership that we've had with Deschutes County and his team, um, to really make this a successful first approach. I think there's a lo, lot more we can do in the future and we'll continue to build. Um, but it has been an impact because before I give it to him, in twenty twenty-three, since we've started this about seven months, our calls for service are twelve hundred. Um, in, in, so we're dropping six to seven hundred, um, and if you look from twenty-one, you know, nine hundred calls for service. That's substantial impact to our ability to deliver public safety service to the rest of the community as well. So I'm gonna shoot it over to Adam here to really let him say why it's been so successful and what they're doing and, and what they got going.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Excuse me, I'm coming off the tail end of a cold, so I have a little bit of a thing going on, so, um. But yeah, nice to meet y'all, my name's Adam Goggins. Um, I've uh, worked with mental health for about fifteen years or so, and I've been with the county for about six years or so. Um, working in a variety of different capacities, but now I'm the program manager for crisis services for Deschutes County. And so replacing, uh, some of y'all may know Holly Harris, she went up to, to bigger and, and amazing things as, as she was destined to, to do. And so, um, what we're gonna do is, uh, just really start out and talk about what is the, the, the program called, it's called C C R T. And what, uh, the expansion, you know, what expansion occurred starting on May first of this year. And so, starting on the first page, um, I just wanted to start with a couple of acknowledgements. Um, this was really, this whole project was really started by a, a community effort to really put this together. And these are just some of the partners, I think these are most, but I, I'm sure I'm forgetting a couple of our partners who have contributed either financially, logistically, or strategically in some way, shape, or form to helping to make this a, a part of it. Certainly City of Bend and uh, Ben PD has been uh, an instrumental part of it. And I wanted to acknowledge that and say thank y'all for that, because y'all have just been enormously, uh, just tremendous partners in this. Both um, with financial giving, but also with logistical giving and all kinds of things, as we're, you know, uh, facing challenges and coming up with you know, new issues and things like that, and uh, our partners with Ben PD have just been enormously, uh, just wonderful to, to work with. And so, starting on the, the next page. So prior to May first, we had something called M C A T, which was the Mobile Crisis Assessment Team. Uh, it was really based off of what uh, we call a second responder model. Whereas we're the second response to the scene more often than not. There were certain circumstances where we would be able to go out and as part of a first response, like if it was to a certain facility, or if it was to a homeless, uh, homeless resource or something like that. But the majority of our calls came from a second response, which meant that community partners, mostly law enforcement, which is where the bulk of our referrals came from, would go out to the scene. And they would determine, hey, a higher level of care is needed, and then they would call us as a second response to that. And so, um, that was really our, our model, and we've been doing that for probably twenty years, twenty plus years, give or take. And um, things had kind of changed starting on May first, and we'll go on to the next one. Starting on May first, uh, that's whenever we helped to, to launch our C C R T program, which is kind of an expanded version of M C A T. Uh, part of this was done through uh, initiative uh, at the state where there was new uh, statutes that said that this is something that we should be uh, they were kind of aspirational statutes, they're like, yes, you should do this, but we have no real expectation that's possible. Uh, we are one of the first counties in the state to actually be able to adopt this, which was a really cool thing.
That's great.
And get this up and running. And part of this was, is that we were also able to do it through support and through funding, through City of Bend and through our other partners as well. Um, starting on May first, we trans, uh, we changed our model from a second responder model to a first responder model. Where we are directly integrated into nine-one-one and dispatch. Who can um, really help us to be able to take calls directly from nine-one-one and triage them directly out into the community. Um, so that essentially removes law enforcement from the equation. And so I always say it's a public health response to a public health crisis. Where historically, you know, there was a public safety response to a public health crisis. And so getting the right resource to the right crisis is, has been really instrumental in helping to, to make this uh, possible. This is some of our criteria, um, I don't have to go over it in depth. Um, this is a criteria from nine-one-one dispatch that must be met, um, for them to come to us. Safety is still a number one priority. And our law enforcement partners have been uh, enormously helpful for us and, and helping to determine uh, what is something that's safe for us to go out to, and what is something that we ought not to potentially go out to. Um, if there's like an active, uh, you know, someone has an active weapons threat or something like that. That's certainly something that uh, rises above our ability to be able to safely diffuse that situation. And so a lot of times those will default to uh, the safety experts, which are our law enforcement partners. But in that environment, what we'll oftentimes do is we'll work in conjunction with them, and we're able to work more closely together with them to be able to coordinate our response and trying to, to figure out.
Can I ask a question before you move on? So if, if someone calls nine-one-one, um, is it dispatch that's, that's, that's helping determine these things, um, first before they pass it along?
It is, it is dispatch, and technically, I don't go into too much of the details on here, it's either dispatch or nine-eight-eight.
Okay.
Are two big referral partners who will kind of filter it into.
Is there someone with a weapon?
The C C R T system.
Okay, got it.
And we are fully integrated into the CAD system, which I'll talk a little bit later, which is the computer automated dispatch system. Which is super slick, it's uh, it, it is essentially the thing that helps to keep us connected really closely with our law enforcement partners, with nine-one-one dispatch, so that we're essentially fully integrated into the emergency response system. Which is a really cool thing, and it helps us to get out there, um, all the quicker and get the right resources to the right crisis at the right time.
I was, kinda have that same question, I thought that this program means the dispatchers are the ones who need to be retrained. Me, the team has already been doing their work, you know, so yeah, that's interesting.
I think it's a great question, we had, and this was uh, something that we worked on quite a bit upfront, was um, because the dispatch, because the calls come through nine-one-one, non-emergency or nine-eight-eight. And essentially, they go through a criteria, just like any other call is, and, and we really worked with, with nine-one-one on this to come up with the criteria that it, dispatchers asking the normal for all other calls for service. So really just was handled like another call for service, if it meets certain criteria, this is the dispatch screen it goes to, and this is who gets the call. Um, and that was one of the key pieces, and, and it was also a challenging piece upfront.
Yeah.
How to get that worked out.
Right.
But it was one of the, one of the ones we were more concerned about was, would it put a roadblock in, in this entire idea? So we were able to work it out with dispatch, which is really.
That's great, that's great, they are great partners for public safety.
Absolutely wonderful.
Not great, essential. Fundamental, all of it.
And, and again, I can't speak highly enough or how proud I am of, of our community and our community partners in that because they're, they're one hundred percent in there with us and we're in there with them. And it's just been a phenomenal experience, having the, the opportunity to be able to build this with them in conjunction with that. But they've definitely been an, an, a critical part of this whole process. So, once it goes from nine-one-one and it gets into C C R T's hands, uh, we have, and we have uh, one of three options. We can essentially resolve the call for service via phone, we can resolve the call for service uh, face-to-face without law enforcement. Or we can resolve the call face-to-face with law enforcement, so we have a determination that we make at that level where depending on the, the factors or the circumstances that are going on, we try to do something called a less invasive approach. So we try to use the least invasive intervention possible, so starting with the phones. And if we're not able to resolve it via phone, say the person uh, has, you know, a psychotic disorder or something like that. Um, where just phone conversation isn't gonna cut it, that's where we go to face-to-face evaluation. And the next step beyond that is maybe there's some safety factors that are prevailing in that, that, um, that's where we escalate it from there. And involve our law enforcement partners, or even fire an EMS if there's a, a medical concern going on. Potentially, you know, someone has attempted suicide, and maybe they're cooperative, but you know, they, they still have taken some medications and we need to have that checked out, so we would co respond with fire EMS. With, um, you know, Ben PD and with our other partners. So this is a, this is a kind of a layout of the CAD system, again, we're fully integrated into the CAD, which has been enormously helpful and instrumental in us being able to, um, really expeditiously respond to, you know, calls in the community. Um, we dispatch in two-person teams that are dispatched directly from nine-one-one and are connected to the CAD and through the radio system, so that if there's ever, you know, a situation where we're out, you know, in, at a call and something goes wrong. We're able to radio really quickly saying, hey, we need, you know, um, I, I'm not out in the field as much as other code three covers, that's the bad one, yeah. Yeah, that's the bad one, so I'm not the one that's out in the field, our, our people know the, the things, but you know, call for code three cover, that's lights and sirens. Um, and it, it gets a response back very quickly, and so our folks are, are safe in the field. And here's some of the, um, here's some of the early data that we have for the city of Bend. Um, that we have just in total, so some caveats to this is that our data collection is um, still early in the process. And so we're looking at trying to shore up some of our, um, our processes, but for the city of Bend, since the start of May first through October thirty-first, we've had seven hundred and fifty-two encounters. Uh, approximately fifty-eight percent of those have been, uh, have been resolved via phone. And forty-one percent have been resolved via face-to-face. Which a grand total of about seventy-five point two percent have been resolved without uh, Ben PD being involved.
Um, wow, wow, that's exactly what it's supposed to do, that's exactly right.
Yeah. On, on the next slide, we can see the grand total, this is the grand total for the program itself. Um, Ben PD um, constitutes about forty-five, if memory serves, about forty-five percent of our overall call volume. Which makes sense, it's the largest population center in the area. But um, we've had a total of sixteen hundred encounters. Um, with a total of, of around sixty-nine percent were resolved via phone, and about thirty percent were resolved via face-to-face. And eighty-three percent, uh, on the whole were resolved across the county without law enforcement.
And that, and this, this is just Deschutes County, or what we're talking about, right, you don't serve a tri-county region.
No, we don't serve, we, it's Deschutes County in northern Klamath County, so it's Deschutes County catchment area. But that's, uh.
Does have a cooperative service agreement or something.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty bizarre, uh, we get, we probably had one call down that far. But we don't, we don't go that, that far, that often. Um, and so, so that's it, um, looking at the financials. Uh, obviously, uh, contribution, we have some very diverse uh, funding sources that come from our, our community partners, including the city of Bend. Uh, which contributed three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars in ARPA funding through August thirty-first of next year. Uh, Deschutes County, we also have a SAMSA grant, a co-responder grant, which uh, has been, uh, we uh, applied for and have been operating through, uh, essentially in, in partnership with, uh, with Ben PD, which that's set to end in July twenty-fourth.
A test, what SAM should stand for. I don't know the acronym.
Substance abuse and mental.
Stabilization.
Something. Administration.
We should be able to figure it out.
It's the federal, it's the federal, it's a big federal one. Uh, substance abuse and mental health.
Okay.
Now, what it stands for is a mystery, but. And then we have, um, the Criminal Justice Commission, uh, Impacts Grant, which the, this grant, uh, ends on July twenty-fourth, uh, in July, uh, the twenty twenty-four. But we're gonna be applying for a two-year extension on that, that grant. And so, um.
And that state funding, that one.
That is, that's through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission.
So that's my big question is like, what, what's going on with funding for this over the medium and long term? And what, what do you need from us to help advocate for that in the upcoming legislative sessions or in other forums?
Yeah, definitely, I mean, right now, I mean, the thing is, is that we don't really have a lot of sources of identified sustainable funding. We do have funding identified through really, uh, through, I mean, y'all's funding is through August of, uh, twenty twenty-four. Any kind of sustainable funding would certainly be, um, valued and would be helpful in, in terms of keeping this going. I know that, um, the ARPA dollars specifically help to fund, uh, our overnight position itself so that we're able to offer twenty-four seven coverage for this as, as well, and go from there.
Do, do you have, I mean, do you have to turn down calls sometimes and not be able to respond because?
We, we have not yet, not at this point, and, and that our hope is, is that we're, we won't ever have to, to get to that point.
The staffing levels are adequate, then, that's, that's based on, cause it's a people-oriented business, right? You're humans talking on the phone or going out on calls or whatever.
Bedroom money, I thought there was, maybe I was just thinking of.
Some new Biden monies.
Yeah, I thought there was some.
There, there was, so that's a very suit, uh, yeah, they, um, there was actually, uh, some enhanced Medicaid funding or Medicare funding. That came by that, um, because of the nature of our program, we actually don't qualify for. And so that was actually meant to help to support this. Um, there's a number of different possibilities that could come about, but nothing has necessarily come into fruition. Uh, the Oregon Health Authority ha- hasn't really contributed anything, uh, at this point to this process other than just what the, the annual contribution is to this, and so, um, and that's a, an ongoing kind of source of, um, consternation, I would say, but, um, it is something that at this point, we are working together with our, our local communities to try and, and, you know, come up with some kind of sustainable model or funding.
Well, I think this is all pointing to the need to coordinate with the county commission on legislative advocacy for the short session, long session. So I'll make sure, we, we, uh, the mayor and I meet with, um, the county chair, which is Tony DeBonne right now, uh, on a monthly basis. But then, you know, we will have opportunities for joint meetings and other things, so we can, we have our legislative session coming up on, or a luncheon. The cocoa lunch of the Central Oregon Cities Organization has their luncheon on December eighteenth. And I know, Megan, you're planning on going, I know there's an open invitation for other counselors that wanna attend.
Okay.
To hear from, our local delegation will be there and to hear kind of our region's priorities, which I know this will be one of them.
Yeah, I'm hoping, you know, that Eric Councillor can, we can direct in this, in some way, pay attention to what's going on at the budget level or other department initiatives to create more funding for stuff like this, cause I mean, the the value of it speaks in those numbers that you shared with us. I mean, I'll tell somewhat personal story in that I have a personal experience with a young person who we had to call. And at the time, it was a, I don't know if it was elevated to that M C A T per se, but it was a PD response. And it generally was a positive experience, but it took a long time for the mental health professional to show up at that time. And I think this model today, there was something that, that happened that were a little frightening and, and, and for everybody concerned from the officers to, to the youth and, um, you know, different approach, I think some of that would have been avoided, and it's, you know, it's a different, somewhat of a.
You know, different approach. I think some of that would have been avoided and it's, you know, it's a different, somewhat of a different approach when people show up on the scene, but it. I'm just really pleased to see this transition happening to the first response model. Um for those people who are experiencing, because I know the call went in essentially as a mental health. All but then nature of it, you know, when it happened is dictated that that the response was different from today. So um super supportive and and excited to see about the the progress.
There.
Yeah.
Um another part of the whole system that we have worked on and we support. Is the stabilization center. Do you find, do you, are you, do you transport people there? Is that part of the response? Yeah.
Absolutely. That's another critical kind of element of of what we do and operate. Um I oversee that program as well and. That's, yeah, I don't think we would be able to launch this program. Without the stabilization center having that kind of grounding source. And so that's something that we're able to to use and and operate uh as as well.
And I will say too also, we are looking at use of our opioid settlement dollars to see if there's gonna be some nexus there to help provide some support. So we're exploring that a little further and maybe some partnership with the hospital.
Yes, I think just to cover a little bit on, we also are hoping that some of the um. Potential treatment monies from ballot measure one-ten. The way that 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 um kind of comes about.
Yeah.
Session, we hope that some of, some of that may become available for this type of funding for the county as well. I think um. To to have, I I left a little bit out in the beginning too, is it's not only impacts police response, but there I've talked to Chief Riley and there's an impact on the fireside as well. Of course, um they do have, they tend to have responsive ambulance when they get those calls, but they're, they have noticed a response, um an impact to their. Demand as well, um not quite as much as ours, but a bit. Um something that I'm quickly talked about was the safety and that was one of the biggest things up front that we really wanted to make sure that the program was successful long term. We knew that there's a safety issue early on, it would, it would. Make us a little more skittish to the program and and also the people working there of like, you know, am I safe to go out and do this work? So that's a big thing that we worked on, they worked on really as an understanding of how do we make this work and keep everyone safe. Um the uh, you know. Before we go much further, I I just did want to impact or talk a little bit about the impact of something. I've said it before, the stabilization center is something we have and and we really prize here, um that not a lot of other communities have that availability. Um I'd love to see uh um the detox center at some point built on to it, but that's the first step of stabilization center. And as a, that a hu- that's a huge piece of the success of CCRT also, nicknamed cricket. Kind of going around all the tops now, we call it cricket. So you hear that term cricket, that's that's CCRT team. Um and I think you guys have started accepting it, right? So there's just so much more opportunity in the future as we continue to see these programs build and support the county and that and and really work as a partner and collaborative. Um for the benefit of the community. We're seeing these types of calls increase in our community. We're seeing the impact daily of people in the street. So um the benefit is here is our community is 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 getting the right treatment. Law enforcement wise, that transition that I've talked about before is I think we, and maybe we don't talk about it enough, but I really think that we are on the front edge and the leading edge of innovation around this specific thing. What we're seeing a lot of law enforcement agencies now is how the success when they train officers in crisis response or they have officers dedicated to mental health response. Which we had that model a while back. Um this is, I think, the next iteration of what that will and should look like in the future for law enforcement agencies. Um we're putting really the responsible people who do that for a living at the front end. Instead of, again, the cops trying to take it on, say, oh, we do this too. Um we had that model. It was a beginning of the model. It had some great successes. But I think this is really what we're building into to see that future success. So it's it's, I think we're really on the front end and I think a lot of. Municipalities would love to have this partnership and kind of this model moving forward in the state.
Yeah, I mean, the extent that we could, that we can tell the story that shows the success, but also helps show like we are out on the. Cutting edge or mov- moving this stuff forward, like, you know, that can help drive resources to our community to to. Continue to show the value to the community and, you know, how it impacts departments.
I'm so sorry to to cut you off. Is is that never resolved by phone?
Yeah.
Just, you know, the right person on the phone to talk to someone can make the difference in their life. And oh, police officers don't spend time. Exactly. That is not the place for an officer with a gun to be responding.
And the CIT training is really important. I mean, I've I've seen it on the scene, you know, seen in these, this experience where it did really help. Like, it's so super valuable, but it's not the the full service that we need and that you guys are delivering now.
Well, in that measure one-ten, you know, the idea is to try and get people into treatment. But, you know, getting people to take that step is just such a challenge. And it's just another place where an officer with a gun. Sit handing them the card saying you should call this phone number, we can help, there's treatment available. You know, that message just might not be received, the same as it might be received. From someone at the stabilization center, for example, after someone maybe has been there. And has had the time to calm down and get into a better frame of mind. Um it just seems logical to me that this system is more likely to get people. Into treatment even for addiction services. Um most folks who are addicted, especially those living on the streets, it's a dual diagnosis. They're self-medicating. A larger mental health issue almost always. And, you know, again, that's why I think. This is a good, you know, we have a better chance for success with this model. In 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 that realm as well, not just helping people who are in mental health crisis at that moment. But getting them on that right path to it, to really improve their lives is is really just. Inspirational to me. It really is. You you're saving lives out there. You're you're saving the lives of. The most vulnerable people who we just don't have a lot of resources. And yes, I think you're a model for the whole country of a better way to help them. Our our whole community, keep everybody safe.
Yeah, I mean, I think for so long it was, it was, you know, follow the Eugene model, right? Kahoots, that's that's the, that's the way to do it. And this is showing that there is a different way to do it. Um that is 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 still achieving the same level of success. Um that I would imagine that that Kahoots has. Um and so I think that's important when we tell our story, you know, in terms of advocacy is 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 look. Look what happened here in the county with with these partners and 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 look at what we're doing, so.
Yeah, and part of why we wanted to take this opportunity to share this with you is because there's some good data for you to also help a amplify the program.
And it's also available on our.
By phone. I mean, that is so, and both numbers were more than seventy-five percent. Calls taken away that were resolved without the need for the.
And for for.
Just remark.
For the council and community, we have a dashboard that, we have our law enforcement dashboard that's up that tracks this in real time. So um if you ever want to get updated information on our bend specific calls, I believe, and I'll keep correcting if I'm wrong, that's on our dashboard. We've highlighted that, so.
Yeah, and I I think that's, I never lose an opportunity to plug our police data dashboard, try to be more data informed and inform our community. So that's on there. Um we're working once, once CCRT gets a better data model about how to um, you know, capture that, we're gonna put that on our website as well. So there's a correlation between the two.
And that's all we have for today, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your support.
Oh. You. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Mike, do you have? With two children?
I do have a question on the, on the scheduling for this, though. Um so are are these just erratic or? Because they're, they're, I'm not showing up on all the other days. It may have been I N that did it wrong.
Could, we'll check. It should be the fourth Monday of every other month.
Every other month.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next one would be January.
Yep.
Cause I didn't see it there either, but.
We'll double check and make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.